There you go. You guys take picture with him?
Come on.
Alright, one time.
One minute.
Alright, good. That's a good one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on.
I didn't, I wasn't a good neighbor. I didn't pop up and get...
I'm sure it is just very nice that she gets...
Yeah, her name is easier to pronounce than it looks.
Okay, where's your award? And lose the purse. Sorry, gotta lose the purse and have the award.
Miss Keeney's brother.
Okay. Very good. Smile. Alright, I'm gonna take one more. Just be on the safe side. Okay. Do it again. Alright. Smile again.
That's it?
Okay, good.
Thank you so much.
One more.
Sir, my son botched that picture. Can we try this again?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll try them at this.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for being in this meeting tonight. I pray you'd bless the members of the council, bless our mayor, and Lord God, we just thank you for your wisdom in this meeting, and most importantly, bless this great city of Smyrna, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like you.
God bless.
Like you.
International Gospel Outreach is located up on Windy Hill at Dixie. Great church, I'm sure that welcomes anyone that's like to attend there. A couple of things tonight before we get started. Mr. Fennel is out sick, and I think we're having some problems with our, I guess, our computer system. Okay. So we'll take votes two different ways. Sometimes we've got technical difficulty, and we've had it all day. Agenda changes, we have none. Merrill reports, I don't really have one other than to congratulate all the winners tonight of the Mayor's Award for Education, those volunteers, the teachers, and the students. We had a great turnout, that's why we're running a little bit late. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexation. A is 2014-397, public hearing zoning request, Z14-026, zoning amendment to eliminate zoning condition 21 from zoning case Z11-005, which requires a fountain as an amenity feature for the subdivision. 3.84 acres, landlots 338 and 339 Concord Hall subdivision. Ms. Howard, will you please give us the background, please?
Yes. Synergy Fund LLC is requesting the elimination of the zoning condition from the zoning amendment case Z11-005, which required the installation of a fountain as an amenity feature for the subdivision. They're proposing the installation of three arbors with benches and swings and a donation to the subdivision reserve fund in lieu of the fountain. The HOA Transition Committee is supportive of the proposal, and staff recommends approval.
Is the applicant here? Mr. Ken Sudrich? This is actually Mr. Corky Welch's district. Let me ask this. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request, this amendment? Okay? If you'll please come forward. Anyone else? We're gonna just get you sworn in, and then let you make a comment once we get through.
I do.
And if you just have a seat, then we'll get to you as soon as... Is it Mr. Corky Welch's ward? Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ken or Rusty, either one of y'all come up and give just a brief background on this subject.
Good evening. Ms. Howard summed it up pretty well. I'll give you a really brief background on this issue. This is Concord Hall subdivision. It is located off Concord Road, Atkins Way, and North Cooper Lake Road. The property was rezoned in 2005 for 27 townhomes. It was subsequently amended for that zoning back in 2011. The site had gone vacant. They'd built about eight of the units of the 27, and the financial markets just killed the project. The home builder came in, picked up the lots in 2011, amended the zoning conditions to meet his product and some other changes, and we'll go through those later. As I stated, it was rezoned in 2005. The subdivision went dark. They built eight of the 27 homes, and then in 2011, the subdivision and the zoning case was amended to allow the developer to build the new townhomes that they were building. As part of zoning condition 21 of zoning case Z11-005, it required installation of fountain as an amenity feature. The home builder is completing this project right now. They're wrapping up subdivision. We're down to our last COs. They are currently working with the Transition Committee of the HOA to transfer control from the developer to the home, or from the home builder to the residents. During that process, the residents mentioned that they weren't really keen on the idea of having a fountain, so that has brought us here today. The home builder has priced out the fountain that they were originally gonna build at Working with staff, they've proposed to build three arbors with benches and swings throughout the neighborhood in lieu of the fountain. Those arbors in total cost $9,000. The developer has also agreed to donate the remaining $16,000 to the HOA reserve funds for their use for later on. Here's a zoning map of the area, just give you a brief idea of where it's located. This is the site plan for the development. All these home, all these units have been built. These are the proposed locations of those arbors and swings, so they'll be spread out through the community, so each little area will have its own arbor and swing. These are the proposed arbors and swings. There's a sketch on the left-hand side, and then a pictorial representation of what they're proposing. This is a site just a week ago. As you can see, there's a lot of green space. That green area in the center there is a stormwater detention facility, so it'll fill up with water and then run out within 24-hour period. Community Development is recommending approval of the zoning amendment with the elimination of zoning condition 21 from zoning case Z11-005. All the zoning conditions will remain the same. The only thing we're asking to do is eliminate zoning stipulation 21, and as we go through, you see they're all remaining the same, and we're striking the last zoning condition. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a simple question, and I think you've stated this already, but this is not only supported by the incoming HOA, but they've almost asked for it to happen?
We have received letters from the Transition Committee that is working from them saying they support the proposal. They just, they'd prefer to see benches as opposed to swings, which we're fine with that. That can be worked out between them on whatever they think's right for their community.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Any councilmember have any question? Rusty? We had, thank you Rusty. I think we had one person that was sworn in, and if you'd like to make any comment, please just tell us who you are, where you live, and any comment you'd like to make.
Yeah, I'm Gregory Ward, and I'm a resident at Concord Hall. I think the one thing I would object to here is the total elimination of the condition. The discussions had been a substitution, you know, for the fountain. We eliminate the condition, they're not required to do anything technically. Secondly, this was presented to the residents at Concord Hall as we had to make a choice between one or the other. There was never the choice of, could we eliminate any amenity feature and have the entire $25,000 for the HOA? And I'm bringing that up because the HOA is not gonna have very much in the way of cash when it starts off, when we take over control of the HOA. And the developer has made it clear to us that if we demand any further funds, he will hit us with a well over $100,000 bill for what he claims he spent on the development, maintaining the HOA from five-plus years ago, before he ever got control of the development. So I would propose that the condition be written such that the residents can determine whether they want the fountain, the benches, or neither, and a negotiated settlement with the developer.
Is it normally when a builder turns over the development to the HOA, is there usually funds that would be in your HOA bank?
Yes. Yeah. And the amount of those funds obviously are, you know, a function of what the developer puts into the HOA, as well as, you know, the experience of the HOA during construction in terms of the collection of dues from the residents versus expenses. But from the financial statements that I've seen to date, I would not expect that there would be very much in terms of funds for the HOA starting off. We have gotten a commitment from the developer that we will have no payables when we take over.
I just wanna ask you one question.
There's another point here as well, and this is the first time a reserve fund has been brought up in connection with this. In all the discussions that we've had, it has never been communicated that these funds would go into a reserve fund, that they would be limited in terms of their use.
Let me make sure that I understand, Scott Cochran, that they're just asking to eliminate stipulation 21?
Right. They're asking to delete that stipulation, but replace it with the requirement that the developer install three arbors with benches and swings, and then donate, and they've allocated a price for that, and then the balance the developer would donate to the HOA. That's it, right Rusty?
So it'd be $25,000 less?
So if you start with $25,000, and then you say, okay, of the 25, it's gonna cost X to install the three arbors with benches and swings, and then the balance would go into the HOA. And I think you used the word "reserve fund," but that was just a term.
Just a term. I mean, it's semantics. It's just, it's under the control of the HOA.
Yeah, so the HOA, whatever the HOA, I don't think the city would want to make any zoning, or would wanna tie that money up at all, especially if there was any regulations. That'd just be, that money would go to the HOA for the HOA to use in accordance with its own policies and rules and things.
The reason there's not a stipulation added to this is because under stipulation number three, it requires a certain amount of open space be dedicated, as well as an amenity feature be provided. So it's already encapsulated in stipulation number three, so I didn't feel the need to write an additional stipulation that, you know, we may run into an issue with and be back here again to deal with. So I felt it was already caught up, and the zoning conditions already provided.
I just wanna ask you one question. On your, the board, or the turnover board or whatever, were they handpicked by the builder, or did you guys have some say-so in it?
They volunteered themselves, and then they were appointed, I presume they were appointed to an advisory committee of the current Board of Directors of the HOA by the Board of the HOA.
Well, I mean, you're really and truly...
That was what I was told was the intention.
You're kind of in a unique position in that he's willing to contribute money to the funds at all, because in a lot of cases, I mean, the builder...
He's not required to do that, obviously.
Pardon?
He's not required to do that.
He's not required to at all. And even though the stipulation was there, I mean, evidently the other group has decided that they can, they will let him out of that in a trade-off situation.
Yeah, as long as it's clear that it's a trade-off.
Yeah.
But it would, I'm just bringing up the point that there are, I know there are members of the community who would prefer neither, neither the benches nor the fountain, and to have the funds available for the HOA itself.
Yeah, but the problem is, sir, that...
But that was never expressed, because we were told that was not an option.
Yeah, but sir, the problem is, is that you guys are not on the official group that is going to be agreeing to this.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right.
Pardon?
You're right.
Well, I mean, I've been HOA president for a long time.
Yeah.
So...
But you may understand also that, or Mr. Cochran may understand, the Transition Committee really has no legal standing itself, only the Board of Directors does.
We're just doing this at the request of the HOA.
Right. All I'm asking is that it be flexible enough so that if the residents decided they would rather not have any amenity and have, and take the entire $25,000, that's available to them.
Yeah, and I know he wants to ask Scott something, but when we put these stipulations in there, that was the public thinking this is what the stipulations are gonna be on this property. And that was before, I guess, anybody had even purchased anything in there. And so, you got a question you wanna ask Corky?
Scott, Mr. Cochran, would it be a problem to make this motion that the developer, you know, we waive the requirement for the fountain, and the developer replace that with the installation of three arbors and benches or swings, and contribute $16,000, or a total of $25,000 to be negotiated between the developer and the HOA?
The first part would be no problem. If you wanted to add the stipulation, and I mean, I agree with Rusty, we've got the stipulation number three, but if you wanted to, that covers the subject matter, but if you wanted just to make it clear now that in the hearing we've heard that there may be an issue with that, and so you'd word it so that you delete the zoning condition 21 and replace it with the requirement that the developer install three arbors with benches and swings, and then donate the balance? You could do that if you wanted, but if you wanted to go further than that, which would mean that you say, or in lieu of that, you just give $25,000 to the HOA, I think that's a full another hearing. I mean, I know that we've often had issues with these smaller subdivisions where you guys have thought that you want a common place for the residents to be able to meet, and see if you, like, sometimes we require gazebos or, you know, some kind of public area for them to meet if they want an available place, and you wouldn't have that, I don't think, if you did away with all of this in lieu of, and just said, pay $25,000, and I don't know how it was advertised, Ken, but it's, I think you just opened up problems adding the second part of that. The first part's fine, I think, Corky, but the second part, I think you just had some problems too.
I got it.
Any questions? Mr. Lenika?
Mr. Welch, I'm okay with the direction that you're headed, but I'm concerned that the applicant who's asking for this change in standard zoning conditions and special conditions isn't here to agree to anything that we say, which normally our procedure has been, as advised by the city attorney, that, you know, we'd like to get the applicant and everybody to agree to whatever the stipulations are before we impose them, and I'm not sure, I'm not comfortable imposing stipulations on somebody who's not present.
I'm good. I'm good with that.
African's here.
African's here? I asked, okay.
Oh, okay.
I thought I asked what the African here. Would you please step forward and let us swear in, just to, I'm sorry. Scott?
Yeah.
Just tell us who you are and what you do, and good evening.
My name's Randy Hearn. I represent Synergy Fund One. We are the decklern and developer at Concord Hall at this time.
Okay, you got us into this mess, and what are you, you'll get us out of it?
Well, I will say that, you know, we called a meeting of the homeowners, and I think, I think everyone was there in the community, which was a great turnout. We asked them what they wanted, and we're trying to present them with what they asked for. So we, you know, we've set aside an amount of money for a fountain, and frankly, we would like for it to go to what the homeowners want. This is what the homeowners told us they wanted, so I would think that would probably be the route that we would recommend.
Yeah, but do you have estimate of what you think it'll cost to build the arbors and the swings and the...
Yes, that was, that was part of the...
Was it in there?
It was $9,000.
Yeah.
So...
Any questions?
Sir, do we have any sort of document or letter from the advisory committee, or whatever this future HOA group is, attesting to their agreement?
There was an email. My partner had, you know, I think they got it...
Do we have that available, Mr. Martin?
It was included with the zoning packet that was provided with you. It was several emails from the advisory committee stating they were in support of the items.
Yeah, there's some letters in there.
Our computer system is up, so I'm flipping back and forth between paper and computerized system. It's not on the computerized system.
I thought all along we were doing this at the request of the home owners.
That is the case.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin has provided us with an email saying they're in support of the proposal. Let me ask you, since I'm not realizing you were here, I was making a fuss about you can't agree to something that you don't know about. Are you agreeable to what the resident here has mentioned? And I'm kind of in line with his thoughts, that we not only delete that stipulation requiring the fountain, but add some wording to say that, you know, a certain amount of money will be provided for common area improvements?
We're okay, we're okay with however they wanna spend the money.
Yeah, 'cause I heard what Mr. Martin said about stipulation number three, but it mentioned walking trails, and looking at the photos, I mean, there were sidewalks and walking trails...
Right.
...around that pond, and we could basically say, we're done now, and we don't have to do anything else.
I have no concern about how they spend the money. You know, we presented what they discussed with us in a meeting, but I would think having the money would make it flexible so they could buy arbors and benches or not, so I'm, we're okay with that.
Okay. It seems reasonable to me, and I appreciate you working with us and working with the residents.
Absolutely.
Max? I do have one question here. In the emails we're reading through here, there's a dollar amount stated of $16,964. Is that the, is that the real number, or...
That was the, the total amount for the fountain was $25,000.
Okay.
The $16,000 is the excess over what the cost of the benches and arbors would have been.
Okay, so the real, instead of, we had $16,000 even that we've been talking about, but it's really $16,964.
We will provide $25,000. They can use it however they want, or we'll put in benches and give them the remainder.
Okay.
Excuse me. The majority of the homeowners met with you at the homeowner meeting.
Yes.
The majority agreed to it, and the board has asked you to bring this forward, right?
The Transition Committee...
Transition Committee?
Yeah.
So someone who's not on that committee, or did not come to that meeting, really has no say. They're not speaking for the whole group. He's speaking for himself. That's my two cents.
I was asked, yes, I was asked a question as a developer. Does it matter to me? I'm okay.
Well, I mean, it's like us renegotiating this here and now, when you've had a transition committee and you've worked it out with them as to what you're going to do, you know, and I feel very important that we not go and change the rules since they have agreed to something. It's their right as representing the homeowners to negotiate this.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Just so I can muddy the water a little bit more, number three says that you will provide things such as gazebos, fountains, recreational playground equipment, or walking trail. Do you have a gazebo out there now?
No.
And you want to eliminate the fountains?
He was never gonna have a gazebo. He only had a fountain.
No, it says in stipulation three...
Yeah, thank you. Those weren't requirements, that was a general comment about common areas.
This common space shall be developed with improvement for the residential subdivision such as gazebos, fountains, recreational playground equipment, or walking trails. So...
So we have a walking trail, and we were, and we're prepared to put in a fountain. We've priced out a very, actually a very nice fountain, $25,000, and prepared to put that in, and we will happily put that in.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that stipulation three is, you know, is what it is, is supposed to be what it is. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if I could, to recommend to approve the zoning request number Z14-026, a zoning amendment to eliminate the zoning condition number 21 from zoning case Z11-005, which requires a fountain as an amenity feature for this subdivision, and replace it with a requirement that the developer install three arbors with benches or swings, and contribute $16,964 to the HOA.
Motion second.
Now, is that, okay. So you can build them for $9,000, is that right?
Eighty-one, eighty-nine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are we gonna be able to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Thank you very much. Sorry y'all had to wait. Thank y'all. Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. A is 2014-391, approval to change the name of Mission Galleria Apartments to Ashford 75, located at 5,000 South Lincoln Trace Avenue. Ms. Howard, the background, please.
Yes, the application was submitted to the city. It has gone through the proper staff reviews and is recommended for approval.
African, by any chance here? This is in Ms. Melanie Pritchett's district.
Yes, sir. Ms. Pritchett? The apartments are currently named Mission Galleria, and Radco, I believe, is the owner. They've bought another complex that's on the next item, and they want to rename the Mission Galleria to Ashford 75, which I find that so amazing. I've never heard of an apartment complex with a number in it, but there's not anything illegal about it. So I will make a motion to approve item A, which is 2014-391, to change the name of Mission Galleria Apartments to Ashford 75, located at 5,000 South Lincoln Trace Avenue.
Second. I'm motioning a second to approve this name change. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Item 6B under formal business is 2014-... Item six B under formal business is 2014-392, approval to change the name of Kineland Farms Apartments to Ashford Woods, located at 1202 Wexford Hills Parkway. Ms. Howard, the background, please.
Yes, this was also based on an application that was submitted to the city. It has gone through the staff reviews and is also recommended for approval.
It's in Mr. Wade Lenika's district. Mr. Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve item 2014-392 to change the name of Kineland Farms Apartments to Ashford Woods, located at 1202 Wexford Hills Parkway.
Have a motion and a second. In discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved six-zero. Item seven, I'm sorry, item C, 2014-394, is approval of FY 2015 budget amendment for staff merit increases. Ms. Howard, the background, please.
Yes, this is a budget amendment that's necessary for the staff merit increases that will be effective January 5th, 2015. It is to move money from contingency at approximately $260,000 to each applicable department.
This is under Finance Administration. Ms. Taryn Nullwich, Ms. Nullwich.
Yes, thank you. I think I've commented before in the past, you know, that we have been so fortunate when we were in the midst of the recession because all of the city employees worked so efficiently and so tirelessly. We were one of the very few cities in the metro Atlanta area that did not have to raise our mileage rates. We did not have to furlough any staff members. We did not have to make any real appreciable cuts in services to residents and that's one of the reasons why I'm very happy again this year to be able to give a pay increase to our staff. This is a merit increase. That means it's not a flat across-the-board increase. This means that the staff members who have really gone above and beyond are being recognized even more so than they have in the past. So, that said, I am happy to move to approve item 6C, which is 24... I'm sorry, 2014-394, approval of the FY 2015 budget amendment for staff merit increases.
Have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved six-zero. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Howard, will we please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, we have 2014-398, approval of mayor and council meeting minutes for November 17th, 2014. Item B, 2014-390, mayor and council to award RFP 15-020, recycling center equipment as a split bid to the most responsive and responsible bidders, OBC bailing equipment for $75,578 and Becker Complete Compactor for $10,200 and to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C, 2014-387, award of RFP 15-013, workers compensation to Georgia Municipal Association and authorize mayor to execute related documents. Item D, 2014-395, approval of extended work hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays for the construction of the Creekside Village Assisted Living Facility, Land Lot 690, 4838 South Cobb Drive, WDGCG Inc., with the following conditions: That all lights used for the extended business hours shall be directed in a manner not to affect surrounding residential properties. All lights shall be kept on site and shall not escape the perimeter of the site and that WDGCG Inc. shall mitigate noise disturbance between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on weekdays and on Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Do you hear a motion? We approve the consent agenda. Have a motion and a second by Ms. Pritchett. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved six-zero. Committee reports will start tonight. Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday and we're all looking forward to the upcoming holiday season this month. Please enjoy it and everyone stay safe. I do want to note that a number of the council members attended the National League of Cities Conference right after our last council meeting in Austin, Texas. I think there were some great seminars and mobile workshops and I think all of us just from talking got some great ideas and inspiration and thoughts about what we can do here in Smyrna, taking ideas from other folks and lessons that they've learned and success stories and try to bring those back and implement them here in Smyrna. So, that was a very, I thought, a very good and useful trip. We've got a big event tomorrow night and Susan Wilkinson will tell you about that. I do want to note that Tuesday night, December 9th, I'll be meeting at Vintage Square with the residents there and some of our staff, trying to work through any last-minute issues as that development finishes way ahead of schedule, actually, from what we thought when it first started developing. And make sure that drainage issues or road issues or construction issues are addressed by the staff in appropriate manner and we're aware of those things and can work with the developer and builders to get them fixed before everybody's done and construction ceases and those folks are out of the neighborhood. So, looking forward to that meeting and being with those folks. Later in the month, I'll have a meeting with Oak Ridge Estates for their annual HOA meeting. I do look forward to that. Finally, I'd like to announce that this Saturday, December 6th, at 12:00 noon, I'm going to hold a rally, a veterans rally for the Veterans Administration on South Cobb Drive at the site of the former Emory Adventist Hospital. Congress has appropriated $6.4 million for a Veterans Administration medical facility to be built in Cobb County. And the initial thought was to put that facility in North Cobb. Since that originally happened, unfortunately, Emory Adventist Hospital has closed and that's a huge loss for our community, a very major loss and one that's still very troubling to all of us. And I know from talking with citizens, they're starting to realize that loss and impact. You know, there's just no way you can replace a community hospital except with another community hospital and that certainly would be the preferred option, but at this point, we don't have one. Congress has appropriated money for the VA. Congressman Scott and Senator Isaacson are supporting it. Commissioner Bob Ott supports it. Smyrna will be a great location, not only for veterans in Smyrna and this part of Cobb County, South Cobb, but for the whole metro area because we've got such easy access to the site from I-75, I-285, veterans from literally all over the metro area in North Georgia will be able to access that facility if we were fortunate enough to get it here. I think I heard some statistics recently that Georgia ranks 10th in the country in terms of the number of veterans in the state population. There's roughly 700,000 or 800,000 veterans residing in Georgia. 10% of that number reside in Cobb County. That's a huge number, a huge number of veterans, when you consider that nationally, less than 1% of the population in the United States serves in the military. So, there is a very high concentration of veterans in Cobb County and in Georgia and those veterans deserve and need a medical facility. This will replace one that's undersized and understaffed, currently located in Austell. So, I'd like to invite all veterans or anybody who's interested in having that facility to join me at noon there at South Cobb Drive on the sidewalk and let's try to rally and get support for the VA to build that medical facility, not in North Cobb or East Cobb or West Cobb, but in Smyrna where we've got space and we've got a community that would need to use it. With that, I yield.
Councilman Lenika, just let me make sure I understand. This is the first I've heard about a rally. Is this... I don't even think that they've made the transition from Emory Adventist as to who's going to end up with the property to begin with. Is this rally, is it sponsored by who?
It's sponsored by me and the Smyrna American Legion Post.
But Max, you have a committee that you appointed and you and this committee have been working with the doctors at Emory Adventist to keep something there.
Well, but this is a free...
Not a member of council just suddenly decide until everybody, "That's what we want," when the doctors are still working on it.
We just need to make sure that's clear, although I support all the veterans 100%. I think what we have said as a body is that we would prefer to have a hospital that serves all the community and just not a specific, you know, group.
Which is what I just said as well, Your Honor. But this is something I'm doing personally and I'm not forcing anybody to agree with me or to attend.
Okay.
If you'd like to be there, you're certainly welcome. This is just established this afternoon.
Okay. Just make sure it's not something that this council is supporting, it's just you, right?
Just me and anybody who wants to be there is more than welcome.
Okay. All right, Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to announce the coming home for the holiday celebration tomorrow night, Tuesday. Join us as we celebrate this joyful time of year. Watch Santa tosses magic dust and light the great Christmas tree that transforms downtown Smyrna into a brilliant winter wonderland of lights. It's tomorrow, December 2nd. The festivities start at 5:00. There are various things going on in the different gyms and also outside, a number of choral groups will be singing. There will be some arts and crafts booths in the small gym and that will start at 5:00 to 8:00. There will be a puppet show in the small gym that will be at 6:30 and another one at 7:30. And the puppet show is the Foxy Christmas Puppet Show by Piccadilly Puppets. And also, I would like to let everyone know that there's a... Atlanta Vocal Project performs at 7:15 in front of the library and they are a men's acapella group. And also, the parade will begin at 7:00. Before that, Campbell High School Band will perform in front of the library, like at 6:50 and then the parade will start at 7:00. And then, right after that, Santa will be lighting his, throwing his magic dust on the tree to light it. And just so you, you know, if you can, it's hard to get there, I know that, but so you know, so you can be there for whatever part that you want to get there for, so. And also, I want to announce that Santa will be during the December season, Santa will be at the Welcome Center in downtown Smyrna and there's various times that he will be there and for you to visit mainly Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays from 6:00 to 8:00 throughout the month of December. And also, I'd like to announce the library is holding a holiday party for children and their families on Tuesday, December 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00 in the library meeting room. And they will have holiday music, crafts, snacks, and best of all, Santa will be there. So, don't forget to bring your camera so you can take your holiday picture with Santa Claus at the library. And that, again, is on Tuesday, December 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I just want to announce this evening that I am going to have a community meeting to discuss the possible, and I emphasize possible, lighting at the Lake Drive Dog Park. I've had some citizens that have approached me requesting that and we will put some timers on them and so forth so that they don't go too late. But we want to do this on December 18th at 7:00 p.m. and I'm going to try to do it at the Smyrna Recycle Center if we're far enough alone. I believe we will be at that point so that we can get some chairs set up in there for the group to come into the training room and have a small meeting that evening. So, I will post signs in the neighborhood so that everybody can see if the location changes or if it's still going to be there. Either way, we'll get some signs posted so that the people can see where the meeting is. But this is regarding the possible lighting of the dog park there on Lake Drive. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Taryn Nullwich.
Thank you, thank you. It is always wonderful to see the village green lit up as beautifully as it is going to be lit up tomorrow night and it's an added bonus that the weather is going to be much milder than it was a week or so ago. So, I hope to see everyone there. It is going to be a great event and with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I hope everyone had a very pleasant holiday. I really don't have anything to say. On Tuesday and Saturday, I drove for seven hours each day going to and from Memphis, so I hope your holiday didn't include a long drive. Anyway, thank you very much and that I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a thank you to Kristin, who is our executive secretary to the mayor and council, and to Heather, who is our new deputy city clerk, for all the decorations that we have here in the council chambers and throughout the city hall. And with that, Mayor, I will yield.
Ms. Howard, anything? Mr. Cochran? Ms. Graham, anything? Okay. We have no show of cause hearing. We got one person signed up for citizens input. Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments? Comments?
My first comment is on the comments at the last meeting on this mystery house over in Mapleton the city bought 10 years ago, which is still outside the city of Smyrna for $150,000. As we all know, money doubles every 10 years and it's been 10 years. So, we've lost with interest. Now, it's $300,000. And now, you've got to knock it down because quite frankly, it's an attractive nuisance. I'm surprised if some kid has gone in there in the last 10 years and got hurt, the city would be in serious problems with lawsuits. It's a low-income area. Only one car can park in it. It's only about 800, 900 square feet. We did check with the historical society and they did say that the best they could judge it was 100 years. Well, the Civil War again was 150, 151 years. Marietta doesn't annex over in Kennesaw. Hiram doesn't annex over in Sendie Springs or wherever. I cannot believe this is a classic example of the cart before the horse buying something. We always believe that our officials use our money wisely. It's not the case. Again, when you knock it down, it'll be lucky that the city gets $20,000 for the empty lot. Another loss like the apartments. That's not good. And again, the disbelief in people that you bought it before it was annexed is unreal. I mean, I just don't understand this and I hope you do knock it down. There isn't a board or rock in that that's worth saving. That is an unsafe house. And I'm surprised Cobb hasn't got on Smyrna to do something one way or the other in these 10 years. If it looked like that in Smyrna, I don't know. And secondly, these flyer, City Hall East, the Duck Club, Honorable Max Bacon, our mayor of Smyrna, is very misleading to people. It's outside the city over in the crossings and it's not in Smyrna, it's in Cobb County. Misleads people that there might be an extension to it over there. And I did check with the ethics board today and they said that any elected official cannot use their position as an unfair advantage in any business and they are going to look into it a little further. But I hope, Mayor, if you didn't know about this, you do now, to have it corrected. And again, thanks.
Any other business to be brought before this body? I do want to thank Kristi from the mayor and council. She's our city, our executive assistant and everybody else to help with the mayor's award. I want to thank Chick-fil-A, Jim and Nick's Barbecue, McIntyre's Bakery and Zaxby's for helping out with some free goodies for the folks that were recognized. Great Thanksgiving, looking forward to a great holiday season. Great Thanksgiving, looking forward to a great holiday season. Everybody be safe. Tomorrow night's going to be a big night. What time does it start again, Susan? And the trees is lit at 7:00, so. No other business. I declare this meeting adjourned. It looks like, oh, it's 8:33. Thank y'all.